Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the, I'm going to call to order, the eight o'clock Judicial and Public Safety Committee meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Evans.
Here.
Member Chaplin. Member Childress. Member Desart. Member Eckhoff. Member Guston. Member Kudjuski. Member Ozog. Member Schorzy. Member Tornatori. Member you. Members A.
Thank you, and do we have any public comment?
No public comment today.
Wonderful, for my chair remarks, just a reminder that at one o'clock is the special call, we're going to have budget presentations. And later in this committee meeting, we're going to have a budget presentation from our Circuit Court Clerk Candace Adams. And with that, can I get a motion for the approval of minutes?
So, second?
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto procurement requisitions, can I get a motion to approve item 232717, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Insight Public Sector, Inc. for the purchase of Portinet forty switches for the sheriff's office for a contract total amount not to exceed $21,011.48. All in, any discussion on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Onto resolutions, can I get a motion to approve JPSR 006323, Intergovernmental Housing Agreement between DuPage County and King County for the housing of prisoners? Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve JPSR 006423, recommendation for the approval of a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between the county of DuPage by its Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and various partner agencies? Was there a second? Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve FIR 018123, acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Court Commission on Access to Justice Grant in the amount of $13,000? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Onto budget transfers, can I get a motion to approve 232718, transfer of funds from new program request personnel to regular salaries in the amount of $65,000 for a full-time accountant? Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, member Desart?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was just wondering, was this full-time accountant in the budget for 2023?
Can I get hiring this person?
Thank you.
I don't know that Suzanne Armstrong, but yes, yes, it was in the budget.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve 232719, transfer of funds from regular salaries to temporary salaries in the amount of $34,800 to cover a shortage due to paying summer law clerks? Okay, and, okay. Any discussion? Member Desart?
Sorry, I had a question on this one, too. So, was this $34,800 planned? I mean, you would imagine that before hiring the summer law clerks, they would have put this in the budget? So, was this an overage, was this overtime? Thank you, thank you so much.
Good morning, if I can. With regard to the summer law clerks, we typically, they had always been unpaid positions, but this year, the public defender started paying, so then we were starting to pay, which is why we've added it this year. So, they weren't paid in the past.
Thank you. No, I'm glad that they were paid, I'm very glad that they're paid, I think they should be. I'm just wondering why the extra $34,800, was this not budgeted? Did we not know that this was gonna?
They were not going to be paid, and then it turned out that they needed to be paid, so that's why it was just, it was not budgeted.
Okay, I understand, thank you so much, I appreciate that, and I'm glad that they were paid, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to item 27, can I get a motion to approve 232720, transfer of funds from salary and wage adjustments to employee medical and hospital insurance in the amount of $9,500 to cover employee medical expenses? Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And moving on to, can I get a motion to approve 232721, transfer of funds from repair and maintenance, other equipment, to automotive equipment in the amount of $466,817 to move allotted funds for upfitting thirty-five vehicles from contractual to capital? Okay. Member Chaplin?
Thank you so much, so, I know we talked about these before, and we were moving the funds, but were these, were these in the budget as well, or?
If I may, Madam Chair, this is that exact one, however, it was on the wrong account, so this is just fixing a technical aspect of it.
So, it was put in the wrong account during the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, yeah, so, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to action items, can I get a motion to approve JPSCO 623, recommendation for the approval of an amendment to Resolution JPSP 0079A22 for a change order amending the purchase order issued to clear loss prevention to increase the contract in the amount of $18,209, resulting in an amended contract total amount not to exceed $324,148.19 for the DuPage Care Center. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to grants, can I get a motion to approve item 232722, access to justice improvement grant?
So moved.
For Illinois Supreme Court Commission to access to justice in the amount of $13,000. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to travel, can I get a motion to approve item 232723, authorization is requested for this emergency management coordinator to travel to the ILEAS Training Center in Urbana-Champaign, or, Urbana, Illinois, to be part of the instructor cadre for commit class. Travel dates are October 2nd to the October 6th, 2023. Skip the rest, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item, can I get a motion to approve 232724, authorization is requested for this OHSEM volunteer to bring the RAC Rapid Comp or Rapid Communications Vehicle to the ILEAS Training Center in Urbana, Illinois. Travel dates are October 5th through October 6th, 2023, and the cost for this will be $75 for gas reimbursement. Any discussion on this? Okay, all opposed, oh, wait. All opposed, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great, so now we are up to the budget presentation for the Circuit Court Clerk Candace Adams.
Thank you to Chairwoman Evans and for the JPS Committee for allowing us to come here today to present our budget. Before I get into the actual numbers of the budget, I thought a refresher on what we do may be helpful. Slide one. The clerk of the Circuit Court's office is a wonderfully unique office that is quasi-judicial, quasi-legislative. Our primary function is to keep the record of the court. While it is a separate and distinct office from that of the Circuit Court, we do benefit from an incredible working relationship with Chief Judge Popejoy and Suzanne Armstrong, and collaborate on many projects together. Because of our unique identity, we are governed by many rule-making bodies, including the Illinois Supreme Court, the administrative offices of Illinois courts, local court rules, state statutes, and the county. I love this slide because it is just a small representation of the number of agencies, departments, and organizations we work with to ensure the courts can operate. If you have not yet taken a tour of our office, I strongly encourage you to do so. Last year, I stood before you and detailed the highlights and challenges that our office faced. I would like to summarize some of those for you again this year, as it is these items that weigh heavily on our budget decisions. I would like to start with our biggest challenge, which has remained unchanged from last year. As many of you know, Illinois has a statewide e-filing system. This system was not wanted by DuPage, and it has set us and the filing community back in many ways. Over objection, we implemented it. The file, the e-filing system was developed and is managed by Tyler Technologies. Since I presented our budget last year, not much has changed with how Tyler performs. Just one small but major example. As of this presentation, you cannot search and find case information based on name. And unfortunately, there is no slowing down with Tyler projects. Recently, every county in the state was asked to implement a data collection program that has the potential to cost our office hundreds of thousands of dollars. While we have hope that things will change with the implementation of Tyler projects, soon, it still remains the biggest challenge that we have to manage daily. Now on to some of our highlights. DuPage County has much to be proud of when it comes to the clerk of the Circuit Court's office. Staff in our office are often called upon by other departments throughout the county, other counties throughout the state, and by the AOIC for help with answers to questions they have. Our accounting department is one of the larger accounting departments in the county. Based on collection, we pay out in between forty to fifty million dollars annually. Under Julie Ellison's leadership, we have been able to liquidate many of our funds to ensure that we are well-prepared for all that is to come from the Safety Act. Just a quick note, our office is audited every year separately by Baker Tilly, and once again, our auditors found us being compliant, which you know is not a small feat for that amount of money. Our chief deputy, Kevin Vaskey, our IT director, Jeff Davies, and our IT administrator, Craig Larson, lead our IT team. The number of projects that our IT department works on daily cannot be given adequate acknowledgement in this short presentation. Suffice to say that a large portion of our budget goes to IT-related project, projects. Court operations cannot function as effortlessly as they do today without this team, that word is not effortless, to say. Our county and courtroom teams are led by our Director of Operations, Julie Kappa. Her leadership and her continued efforts to cross-train all employees have given the office more flexibility when it comes to adapting to new laws or procedures, or an increase in the number of courtrooms in the courthouse. Last but not least, we have also seen significant change in our HR department. With the help of John Persekiti, this year, we have implemented the first parental leave policy in the county. As you can see, a lot happens in the clerk of the Circuit Court office. Again, if you have not visited us, you are always welcome to. I love taking people on the tour, and I am so proud to be a part of this team. Next slide. Now on to the numbers. Our budget is very similar to our requests in 2023. Starting with expenditures. Not many items of our office expenses get paid through general fund. As you can see, our general fund request is 6.1% increase from last year's adopted budget. 5.8% of the increase is related to salaries. This is less than the 6% increase in salaries authorized by this board last year. The other 0.3% of the increase is attributable to the expenses that the Finance Department has asked us to account for, starting this year. Next slide. Onto revenue. Now, there's a lot of years in this one, so, here we go. Our office gets revenue from a variety of sources, including case filings and traffic tickets. The case filings are up 7% from last year and 17% from the year before. Almost all the money we collect gets paid out to other entities, like the general fund, state accounts, police agencies, et cetera. In 2023, we projected a decrease in revenue of approximately $2 million from 2022. This was our educated guess as to what the impact of the Safety Act would be. As you know, the Safety Act will not go into effect until September 18th, 2023. While we originally predicted a loss in revenue for 2023, we believe that 2023 revenues totals may be close to those of 2022, and that we will not experience the anticipated $2 million loss. For 2024, however, we are again projecting a $2 million decrease in revenue as a result of the Safety Act compared to 2022 actual revenue numbers. Thank you again for the time today, now members of my staff and I will take any questions you may have. If you have none, that's okay, too.
Any questions? Okay, member Guston?
A quick question. How do you anticipate filling that potential $2 million hole? What's your strategy and your, you know, strategic plan, let's say, with respect to covering that?
So, for the Circuit Court Clerk's office specifically, our loss is going to be in the $400,000 to $600,000 range, and we've accommodated that in our special funds. The loss and revenue really comes to the general fund, right, so it comes to the county.
It fell, another question with the Tyler program? And we had that at the city also, and it is a struggle?
Yeah.
But there were other products that could support that program? Have you guys looked into where they're, where they're lacking, where their gaps are, to see if there's any other programs that might be able to benefit and be more user-friendly?
So, we didn't choose Tyler. Tyler was chosen by the State of Illinois, the Illinois Supreme Court. They're the ones that have the contract with it and do the mandate for us to have to use it in our office, so, so we're not in the contract with them.
And there's no way to supplement their, their shortage, their lack of friendly user-type stuff? Because I know it's very difficult there.
Yeah, we don't pay for Tyler, but yeah, there's no programs that we can do that's different or off what the Supreme Court says.
And they won't let you do a program or buy a program that can supplement it to be, wow, okay, thank you.
Okay, member you?
So, I also had a question with regard to Tyler Technologies.
Yeah.
So, are you saying that if you do an online docket search, you cannot find a case by the party's names?
Through Tyler's support system, yes, that's right.
Okay, that's really crazy.
Right, and there's no, there's no date, there's no anticipated date as to when that's going to change.
Okay, so, I know that our IT department has, in the past, you know, worked with certain vendors and, and created certain things, you know, new storage banks, whether it be for memory or redoing stuff. I think the public defender's office asked for some specific request, and the IT department worked with the vendor, and then they were able to do it. Is that not a possibility?
Not a possibility. Wow. Yeah, now, our systems, like, we, we have I2 file for criminal, you can do that. It's the civil case filings.
Okay, that's crazy. I do have one more question, and I might have missed it because I was taking notes during your presentation. You did state that you were asking for a general fund increase of 6.1%.
Right.
Did you go through, what was the reason for the increase? Is it salary mainly?
Yeah, 5.8% of that is salary, which if you remember, the board allocated 6%, so it's less than the 6% that was given last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, member Chaplin?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your presentation. Your, your office is doing outstanding work, hear from other elected officials how well you're doing, and I really want to commend you on your parental leave policy. It's something that should be looked at throughout the county. I think it's going to help with retention and even bringing people on board, right? So, I hadn't had a chance to look at your detailed budget yet because it came late yesterday afternoon, but I plan to go over it, but again, thank you for your outstanding work and efforts.
Thank you. We're very excited about it.
Just so you know, it's my, my, member Childress, member Cahill, member Ozog, and member Kudjuski. And so, if there's anybody else, you can raise your hand, so, member Childress?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The shortfall in the budget is due to the cash bond?
Right.
Okay. And would it not stand to reason that if we have less inmates in the system, we would spend less money on meals, healthcare, and housing? Has that been accounted for, or is that?
So, that's a different department than me, right? That's going to fall under the sheriff and how he does it. I can just report what we think is going to happen as a result of the numbers from cash bail. So, I don't know, I would agree with you. That if we have less inmates, there'll be less things to pay for in the jail system. Just for the Circuit Court Clerk's perspective, we're going to be seeing less money coming in.
Thank you.
Member Cahill?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned about your audit with Baker Tilly and the clean opinion. I seem to recall that there was a list of cash accounts through your department that need to be closed or consolidated. We have a bunch of bank accounts in there that have not been part of the audit. Is that correct?
I'm thrilled you brought this up, because I have a whole team ready on this one, okay?
We want to hear.
Okay.
We want that closed, those accounts.
We hold these accounts statutorily, okay? So, these accounts will never come under the treasurer's office, they will never do that. And it's not county money, right? So, the money that we're collecting?
It's taxpayer money.
It, no, it's not.
Okay.
It's money that we collect when you file your case, or pay your bond, or things like that. It's not?
Public money.
Sure, I think, but every dollar is public money, right?
Well, it's public money.
Right, so what happens on this money is we collect it and then pay it out. Sometimes to the general fund in the county, a lot of times not to the general fund in the county. A lot of the times to local police agencies or state accounts, state department agencies, okay? So, this money isn't necessarily the county's money, and I think there's some confusion. So, let me say this before I say this, okay? I'm going to bring up the team, because they're going to explain to you why these are properly held by the clerk of the Circuit Court's office, and what we can do to remedy the, so we met with Baker Tilly yesterday. What we can do to remedy the point on Baker Tilly's, Baker Tilly's audits. And also, just a fun note, this is the first time we've ever been asked for it, so we would have been happy to provide all this information before. This is just the first year for it, but we'll start with Lisa Smith.
Well, see, one, one follow-up to that. I understand that it's public money and that by statute you have to have it. The question of Baker Tilly is that it needs to be reviewed. There cannot be specifically, I think our state's attorney's on that. So, we have to have, like, reconciliations, we have to have an outside person reviewing that, that's what we're looking at.
Yep, so we've already started sending that, because it's the first time that we've been asked for it. And there's already two accounts that we were doing that for years on, sending the reconciliations for.
Okay.
So, if, had they wanted this and asked us for it, happy to do it. We already have them sending, like, on their way over now, we have all the information. But they are properly held by our office. All right, go ahead.
Just briefly, so we did meet with Baker Tilly yesterday. That note will be removed from the county's audit. Basically, they were satisfied that what the clerk's office has agreed to provide is more than satisfactory to wipe out any of that comment. And again, these funds that Parker's talking about are statutorily created accounts that they withhold, but now they're going to be sending basic information monthly, so that way we are all good. And Baker Tilly, both clerk's audit team as well as the county's audit team met yesterday, and that's going to be satisfied now, so they don't have anything.
Perfect, that sounds great. It's basically just another person looking at the reconciliation and making sure that everything is done properly, so that sounds great.
We should be all good.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
And, and there's other departments that have these.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not just the Circuit Court Clerk's office, right, right.
Oh, great question, okay, member Ozog?
Thank you. I want to thank you for your presentation and the way you work collaboratively with so many groups, et cetera, but I also really appreciate in your report how you name your leadership within your department. I think that's really great to recognize, great job people are doing. I'm curious about, as member Chaplin mentioned, the family leave. Can you give us a 30-second rundown of what your, your department or your office is offering as a family leave policy?
Yes, so, if you bring a new child into your life, right, through birth or adoption, you get 12 weeks paid leave. And that's whether, regardless of what gender of parent you are, right? So, mom, dad, you get the 12 weeks of leave. I recognize that for other departments, they may not have the ability that we have, but we are so cross-trained that allowing somebody to leave for 12 weeks to take care of their child is something that our, our office can accommodate pretty easily. Go ahead, yeah.
Any provision for if there's a necessity for longer than three months?
Not in this leave, we do have a personal leave policy, there's different rules that govern that. And then any law that comes into play, certainly, we, you know, abide by those, but?
Disability, et cetera.
Sure, exactly, right.
But this is what you're doing right now, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Kudjuski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to be facing financial pressures in the next couple of years, and so we need to start, in my opinion, right now, but working towards rightsizing, you know, county elected officials and departments, and how many people we need to have in these departments. And then discussing with finance, you know, we're going to have a surplus again this year, very large, but half of it's due to expenses being down, and that attribute a lot to personnel. And a lot of it has to do with personnel for vacant positions. And comment from staff was, you know, elected officials have a lot of head count that have been vacant for years, they don't want us to get rid of the head count. Yet, these positions have been vacant for years, and as a result, go into our budget, and then when the, come the end of the year, the actual comes in, and we have a surplus. But we need to start getting the departments to where they should be head count-wise. But in looking at the salaries here, you know, for 2023, we approved $7.6 million for the budget, but yet, we're anticipating it's going to be a half a million dollars more, it's going to be 8.1 million. So, it's going to be a half a million dollars over the budget, which means somebody's coming back to us shortly and going to be asking for a half a million dollars more. And I had a conversation with Jeff, and it's because we got money in contingencies, and it's due to the COLA that you said, so it's going to be 8.1 million. I'm having a hard time understanding, we're going to have these budget amendments. So, I'm guessing, actually, when I look at this, you really don't have a 5.6% increase, I think it's a flat budget.
Right.
I think it's flat, it's actually going to be maybe a couple dollars less than what we're going to finish this year at, because we're going to make an amendment soon here to the budget to add your half a million to your COLA, et cetera. So, actually, your budget's coming in, you know, my opinion, it actually looks like it's coming in slightly less than what we're going to finish this year.
Right.
Again, I don't know about the head count, if you have positions that have been open, et cetera, but I just want to know from finance, I mean, when are we going to see all these budget amendments that are going to be coming to us to change this current budget, to add all these salaries in, to get? Because I assume every department's going to wind up going over now, like I said, I'm looking at this, when I first came up, it didn't make any sense. How could it be a half a million dollars more than what we approved? Because you can't spend more than we've approved, but yet?
Right, and we didn't.
No, I know you didn't, you haven't got there yet, and we're going to give it to you, because it's in contingencies, and it's the COLA that was promised.
Correct.
But I'm just trying to figure out, okay, where are we actually at, and where are we at? And I don't know, I'm headcount, I don't know anything about your department, but you know, one that we specifically talked about, finance, it's been four or five years with five open positions, and now there are eight. Well, maybe they don't need to, and I don't know what your department's, I don't know anything about the head count, it's more general to staff. And actually, when you're saying your budget's up, actually, it's not, it's actually less than what you're going to finish this year at, once we make the budget. And so, you know, my opinion, assuming the salaries are right, you're doing a good job as far as picking up a flat budget. But it's more general for finance and when this is going to come to us with all the different?
I'm happy to follow up my finance.
Oh, yeah, it's nothing to do with you, it's just, you just stuck out here, because I'm like, how could you spend a half a million dollars more than what we approved? Except now I got an answer, sort of.
So, to answer your question, member Kudjuski, one of the things that we do, and we've done this historically, our merit increase and our COLA increase. We don't allocate that during the budget to the individual departments. We put it in account 1180, that aggregate or total dollar amount. As we progress through the year, we watch what they actually spend. So, then we true up at the end of the year and transfer budget only based upon what they need for salaries. So, it's kind of a roundabout way to kind of save some money, because we know that, you know, things change during the year, head counts lower, head count may increase. We do the same thing with the benefits, insurance, IMR, Social Security. And we do that for the general fund, so specifically, at the end of the year is when we like to do those transfers.
I got, you know, the elected official, she's coming up, telling me she's got a 5.6% increase, but she doesn't, because when we actually true this thing up?
Right.
It's flat. Right. And so, it's hard when I'm looking at numbers, you know, and she should be telling us she's actually got a decrease. I agree, but that's great, you did a great job, and you're actually lowering your general fund. Maybe it's just because of the magnitude, I'm not sure, we've always done this, I think maybe the last? I think maybe the last several years we've done that. But it's just difficult trying to look at what actually you need in a budget. I'm looking here and I'm like...
Well, you bring up a good point, and it's something that we spoke about for, you know, quite a bit during this year is for the merit and the COLA and the benefits. Do we allocate those to the budget upfront during the year to all the departments? Or do we set it aside in the general fund in this 1180 contingency fund?
Because I understand probably...
I think that's probably something the Finance Committee needs to discuss a little bit more.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I assume if they've got open positions during the year, then you're not giving them as much.
Exactly.
Right, so you're only giving them what they need to finish the year. But when we're looking at the current, yes, what we're doing now, we're looking at budget, I'd rather have her tell me that here's what my budget is and I'm flat or I'm down a percentage. Comes in and it's like a 5% increase, and it just...
So I just, we just looked at the numbers. The 6% for 2023 was about $550,000 that could be allocated to the circuit court. Our projections show by the end of the year, they'll only need about $220,000 of that. So if we would transfer in the additional $550,000, that's additional money that would be in those budgets.
If that's the case, then your anticipated 8.1 is not really anticipated.
I agree.
You should be telling me it's 7.8. I mean, because I've got to look at what I've given, and I'm giving an anticipated 8.1, but you're telling me it's actually not, it's actually going to be anticipated 7.8. That you just said.
I know. If all of our positions were full all year round, we would be at the 8.1.
No, I understand.
And by the way, I'll take the compliment, the earlier compliment, I'll take that.
No, I understand that, but I, and I would come in and it would say 7.9 is what you're anticipating at, which is again why we're going to have this big surplus again this year. You're still going to ask for 8.0 because if all the positions are full and you need them. But that's the kind of information I like to hear. I mean, we're going to anticipate 7.9, and the reason it's going to be 8.1 next year is because we had three vacant positions that haven't been filled but will fill them or there's been some average on time. But I'm looking at 8.1, and it's not, it's actually, now we're going to finish at 7.8. But I just, when I like see, and in actual, I just like to see what it's actually is. And I don't know what this actual is, is it through today or is it through a couple of months ago?
The actual is through probably the end of July.
Okay, so okay, that's...
Actually, beginning of July, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's just like, you know, that's like a kind of...
And there should be a projected number in there too.
Right, that's the anticipated one that was 8.1, but we're saying now it's not going to be. I just like the actual real numbers, and I understand you'll say I want to increase because of the vacant positions.
Well, we meet on Friday, so we'll put that on our list.
But that's fine, I just, in looking at that, but again, I think, you know, her budget's actually going to be less than last year's budget, actually, once we get done. But it may be increased because of, your budget may be increased because you need more money for those positions that were open during this year.
It would make it a lot easier on finance too if everything was budgeted at the beginning in the current accounts. But, you know, sometimes we don't spend all that money.
In the past, people have spent that. And it's, yeah, and we're doing it because we don't have the right size of some of these departments and like officials where we have headcount that's not needed. So if we can get to, we won't have to play these games. Thank you, and thanks for...
Okay, we're going to go, member Zay, member Chaplin, and then member Guston. That's what I have so far.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Your leave policy, did you do an estimate, how many people and what's that's going to, what that's going to cost?
Yeah, so it's an interesting study, right?
Obviously, it's...
Yeah, how many people are going to get pregnant next year, right, in the office, right? That's the question. It's not going to be you, and it's not going to be me, I got to tell you. I'm at full, and I am at capacity, okay? So we average like two to three maybe, right? Since I've started, we have one right now. And we had one when I started, so we have had about one a year. But we guess up to two to three maybe a year, but it's like a weird question to ask.
Right, okay. Okay, you know, I had the other question on total personnel. That's where I'm confused too. I mean, it says, you know, your budget was 7,750, and estimated is at 950. I mean, is that again, that we're talking about just timing of what's going on? Says approved budget was 770, 50, and then now it says current budget, 9.5 million.
I don't know what you're looking at, so I can't, I can't see what you're looking at.
It's total personnel for last year, then you're only asking for 8.193, so...
Well, so is the nine including benefits?
That's what Mike...
I just don't know what you're looking at, I'm sorry.
Should we find a line for that? Because that is confusing everybody else.
Well, yeah, the line is in 1180 in the general fund.
Right.
So...
But you see what I'm looking at, approved budgets, $7,750,000, and then right now it says 2023 current budget, 9,520,000.
Yeah, that's an anticipated amount.
Anticipated, okay. Right. Okay.
Okay, member Chaplin?
Thanks, Chair Evan. So I just wanted to remind everybody that in finance, next week, we are going to have the state's attorney to talk about the outside accounts. And also, the county board has to be very careful because we cannot interfere with the internal operations of outside elected officials. So we have to tread very lightly on that. And, but, you know, we want to address it, but again, I just want to remind everybody that elected officials do have, they're separately elected and they run their departments how they see fit. And Clerk Adams has been very cooperative. Right away, she sent everything over that we asked for, and I'm sure, well, if any other accounts that we need, I'm sure they'll be cooperative too, but just something to keep in the back of our mind, so thank you.
Thank you, member Chaplin. Member Zay?
Thank you, member Chaplin, but this is the only time from August to end of November that countywide elected officials actually have to be nice to us because we have to actually do their budget, so...
So true.
So again, we do have to approve it. I know they get to run it, but I mean, that's part of our process, making sure that we give them enough to run their office and... Oh, I don't care about turnover rate. As long as they can do whatever they want, as long as they're within the budget amount, that's fine with me.
Okay, member Guston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the discrepancy appears to be that we have vacant positions. Is there a possibility that we can kind of have information, more transparent information as to what vacancies are available by department? And then that way, it's pretty, you know, I mean, I know it's going to change as time goes on, but at least having that information available, it's like, okay, you've got these vacancies. This is what we're budgeting for these vacancies, and then just move on from there.
These are not like vacancies that we're just keeping open. Like we're saving the money in, like it took us three months to hire somebody, so that three months savings that we would have otherwise paid, does that make sense?
So it's the gap between when you actually hire somebody and not hire somebody?
Yeah.
And then the other one on the maternity leave is, are there any positions in your office that would be full-time from home, working opportunities? Because I know a lot of companies are going that way to...
Yeah, so we're an office that has to stay open. We stayed open during the pandemic as well, so it's our policy that there's not any work from home situation.
Gotcha, okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, member Krajewski.
One more, and it's more for Jeff, because, I mean, we've approved for all the benefits, and that's fairly easy to calculate, especially social security based on payroll. Why can't we put that in their budget right now? Because we've already, seems like we've already done it because you got your other, you got your current approved budget and then current budget for '23, and we put it in the current budget?
So we've had a long discussion earlier on, do we put the benefits in in the actual budgets out there? We were going to, we're not. And I'll tell you the reason why we thought if we put the benefits in everybody's budget, they have complete control over those benefits. Then the problem is if you have a reduction in workforce in a department or an EO's office, they have the ability to transfer those benefits out into other lines with no oversight from the board. And that's why we keep the benefits in the other, in the general fund because we don't want to have those benefits. Let's say you have a reduction in workforce, we don't want to have those benefits used for other sources within the budget.
Haven't we put it in already in '23? Because you have fiscal year approved budget, then you have fiscal year current budget. In the current budget, it's in there.
It's allocated out.
It's in there now.
Those are allocated every six months.
Okay, so every six months.
Because the payroll system charges social security, IMR, and health every payroll. So that it shows a negative balance, so then we have to transfer it in there to throw out that negative balance. And we'll do it once again at the end of the year. With the COLAs, we wait until the end of the year.
So when we're putting them in, are we changing the budget every...?
Every six months. So in June, there was half that was done for the benefits.
So I do want to clarify, one item is if you did put it in their budgets and being a personnel line, if they were in their budget and it were to be moved into capital or something like that, that would come back to the board, but that becomes their, it's within their budget at that point. You have more control when it's outside of the budget.
Uh, member Zay?
Thank you. And history, Nick knows, when we did that, it was a feeding frenzy at the end of the year. People were spending out their budget, buying printers, buying computers, buying whatever because they had the money in their budget, and we lost millions and millions of dollars that way.
My recommendation would be to keep it in the general fund and then you can transfer.
But can we just get it for like presentations, so we kind of know? I mean, it's hard when I'm comparing.
It's a matter, I mean, as far as the presentation goes, I mean, we can figure out how you as a board would like to see it. We can absolutely account for it, show you what that is. That's easy to approximate what those benefits would be. But that next step of transferring it into individual budgets, it's ultimately a decision for the board, but our recommendation would be there's more control if you keep it in a general fund and allocate it out.
Yeah, because as member Zay was saying, he's looking at, we approved the budget at 7.7 for personnel, but it's going to wind up being 9.5, and now she's asking for 8.2. Sorry, you went first, you're getting...
I told this to the new problem.
It's going to be with every department, we're going to look.
So, so if you remember, the overall benefit package for COLAs and merits were about 6% last year. The vast majority of departments and EOs are digesting a portion, if not all of that, within their budget. And that's the reason why historically it's been held out. If we have a shortfall, that is in the contingency line, obviously. So it's a matter of how you want to account for it.
Okay, so let's wrap this up. Thank you so much for the presentation, Clerk Adams. And anybody, you're always free to email her if you have any other questions. Okay, so let's move on to old business. Any old business? Any new business? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.